Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of the 29th of April 2017. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Brown?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, indivisible, equal and just.
Good morning, Mr. Villalobos. And will you please call a roll and give us a TV announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County and Santa Barbara television, CSB-TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Alonfo, San Inez Valley, San Maria and Arquet areas. Rebroadcasting Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on CSB-TV's website and may be downloaded in a few days from CSB-TV's website or the county's YouTube account. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Farini?
Chair Cooney?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Blau is absent today.
And for the record, I'd like to send our best wishes to Commissioner Blau. Hopefully, he's well enough to be watching us and excited by the diversion from his recent surgery. Good luck, Dan, and we want you back here very soon to help us out. Ms. Black, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have four items scheduled for your commission. We're ready to move forward on all four, but there has been a request to continue item number two, the Rancho La Laguna tract map and state small water system. And I believe the current request is for April 26. And that request is so that the applicant has a full commission to present the project to. And then, I'm not sure if the commission wants to move forward with the Sequo training today or not. I know you were interested in having a full commission, and so that may be something that we want to continue to a future date as well. Although, I have to say, April 26 may be getting a bit full, but we can put it wherever we want to put it, just so we don't lose track of it. So that's today's agenda. In terms of the Agenda Projection Report, we will be meeting again next Wednesday, April 5th, and we have several items on that day, as you can see. I, on your behalf, kind of pre-cancelled your April 12th meeting. There was nothing scheduled for April 12th. When I did that, I was sitting with the Montecito Planning Commission, and they needed to schedule a special hearing, so I would request that your commission formally cancel April 12th today. And then, we will be meeting again on April 26th. Right now, there's the Tensley Winery Land Use Permit Appeal on, as well as the Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance Amendment. And then, if your commission chooses to, the Rancho La Laguna project will be on that day as well. I don't think the accessory dwelling unit item will be ready for your commission. We're still working through the Montecito Planning Commission. I think it's wise to finish that before we bring it to the commission. But we are looking at potentially shifting the Friends of Ballard Canyon Appeal of the Lerner Winery to April 26th, and we believe we can handle that at a staff level. The applicant has agreed, I think, to that date, at least tentatively. And we're reaching out to the appellant to see if April 26th works for the appellant. So that item may come on April 26th as well. And the reason to try and shift some of these around is because Commissioner Cooney will be out on May 3rd, so we wanted to have a full commission for as many items as we could. We do not have anything scheduled at the moment on May 10th, which would be a normal Santa Maria hearing, so we'll just hold that and watch and see what happens. And then, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be May 31st, and right at the moment, we don't have anything scheduled, but I'm sure things will come. Maybe the accessory dwelling unit by then, or a bit sooner. So that's all I have to report, and I think the only action, unless you have questions, is to cancel the April 12th meeting.
I'll make a motion to do that. I'll second. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to cancel our meeting of April 12th, which is two weeks from today, and we need to have a roll call vote so we can include Commissioner Farini.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Farini?
Aye.
Chair Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Black. Any other questions or concerns about all the information we just received from Ms. Black about possible shifting around? Everybody follow that? Commissioner Farini, did you keep up with Ms. Black on the changes?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cooney. I did.
Okay, great. Then we'll move to public comment. This is the moment for anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment on a matter not on today's agenda. See if Commissioner Brown has any. Doesn't appear to are any. No one's here for a public comment. Nobody in Santa Maria, Commissioner Farini?
No one here.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move to Planning Commission informational reports. Does anyone have a report this morning? Not seeing any. Then we'll move to the minutes of March 8, which were circulated.
I'll move to accept the minutes. Second.
Thank you very much, Commissioners Brooks and Brown. Roll call on the minutes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Farini?
Aye.
Chair Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Then we have a report from Ms. Black, from the Director's Office.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, a very brief one. The Board met twice since your last hearing. They met on March 14th in Santa Maria and March 21st in Santa Barbara. And I think there's really only one relevant item to report to your commission, and that is that the department brought its fees to the Board of Supervisors on March 21st. Our intention really was to update our fees based upon our costs, and so we did a very extensive cost study to support the fees, and the Board did approve in the first reading the increase in fees. And the increases are, the fees are really restructured fairly substantially, so in some instances, it's a bit hard to compare one versus the other, but I would say the petroleum fees went up fairly substantially, about 50%. And we found in our cost study that we weren't capturing a fairly significant portion of our costs, as well as needing to update the cost based upon current hourly rates and benefits and whatnot. So petroleum fees were done. The film permit fees were restructured so that the fee is really tied to the amount of work that's done, instead of just sort of a flat fee for any kind of film permit. So it really is a much more responsive fee to the requests that's being proposed. Building fees were updated as well, and what we did there is we really simplified our approach, and essentially, there's kind of a base fee for residential commercial development, and then add-ons, depending on the level of complexity of the work that's being proposed. So it's much more reflective of what an actual, real permit is required to do. And then, planning fees, we also reduced the number of fee categories so that it's a bit easier to understand what fees are being proposed. And then, our hourly rate went up to, I think, to 26 an hour? So a fairly substantial increase in our hourly rate. So that was the big news, at least for our department. On March 21st, we'll be going back for second reading next Tuesday, and then, following that, we'll be going to Budget, the Budget Workshop hearings, the week of, I'm in the wrong month, the week of April 17th. I think our department's budget will be considered on April 19th, and the most significant part of that is the Long Range Planning Work Program, which your commission weighed in on. So I think we'll have a pretty good idea of what our budget and what the work program will look like after the Board's hearing on April 19th. And I think that's all I have to report.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Just looking ahead, some of the ordinances coming before the Board, and about approximate dates, marijuana, short-term rentals.
So, yes. Marijuana will be going to the Board on April 4th as well, for the urgency ordinance, as well as for an ordinance to establish the registry that the Board spoke of back on February 14th. So those will be going on April 4th. We anticipate, fingers crossed everything goes really well, getting to the Board with the permanent ordinance at the beginning of February of 2018. So that will definitely be on your plate later on this year. Our assumptions are very aggressive, because the ad hoc group is trying to get this in place as quickly as they can. So it assumes one hearing with the commission. So we probably ought to think about what that means and how we can get you better, best prepared to try and handle that in one hearing, and one hearing before the Montecito Planning Commission. So it's a very, like I said, it's a very aggressive schedule, and I think it's going to be a challenge to achieve, but we'll see what we can do. And then, short-term rentals will be going to the Board on June 6th.
Regarding the marijuana, as things progress or as public meetings take place, can we be made aware of those, just so we can kind of follow what action or what information is being presented? If you just email us in some way, and then that kind of gives us some heads up, or we can start getting familiar with the material?
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair and Members of the Commission, you know, this might be a case where we want to provide you a briefing or two as we progress. You know, we'll be doing an environmental document, and so I think it will be helpful for you to see how all of that information's coming, so that you're not just hit cold with it.
Okay. And last thing, with my continuing interest in the eastern Galita Valley Residential Design Guidelines going before the Coastal Commission, has that been scheduled?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I don't think we have a specific date, but we do expect that to happen in the next couple of months. And we have a meeting with the Commission on Monday, Commission staff on Monday, and we'll see if we can get that.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Other questions? On the Director's Report, okay, I had a couple, Ms. Brown, Ms. Black.
Pick a color.
I think you knew Commissioner Brown. First of all, the effective date of the fee increases, do you have that, I mean, assuming the Board approves on second reading?
It's 60 days later, so it'll be basically June 3rd.
Okay. And with respect to the fees, has there been a change in the fee for appeals from various commissions and boards to the Board?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that's a really good question, because it was an issue that arose, and I should tell you why the fees went up so much as well, because it's not just costs. So what we did is we recommended fees to the Board of Supervisors that recovered our costs to the extent possible that we think is feasible under the law. So that plays into the appeals fees. We did not change the appeal fee substantially. It may have gone up a tiny bit based upon the hourly rate, but it's not, you know, much more than the 653 or whatever it was, whatever it currently is. But our other fees, because we weren't at 100% cost recovery or close to 100% cost recovery, went up quite a bit more. And the Board does have a policy that when there are fees that pay for a service, they're supposed to be cost-recovered to the extent you can. And that's just never been the way, I think, that our department has, well, that the Board's approached the fees for our department or for many other departments. And I think that because of the budget situation, they're really looking at that much harder. So, appeals fees didn't change, because we didn't feel like we could support a significant increase and really still be compliant with the law. We are not capturing unrecouped zoning enforcement costs. We are not capturing the full cost of inspection of water heaters and something else, and I can't remember what the other thing is. Because there's, it's such an expensive fee compared to the object that's being installed that it's a real deterrent, and we think it's more important for people to properly install than pay the fee. So basically, I think the building and safety and planning recovery rate is about 95%. Building and safety is about 99, and planning is about 94, I think.
Mr. Brown?
Inspection of water heaters? Really? Every time you get a new one, you're supposed to? Really? Learn something.
Yes, of course.
Oh, of course. I've just forgotten.
Sorry. Thank you. Well, it's plumbing and gas, so it is important that it be installed properly. So that's a long answer to a short question.
No, no, it's, I think it's important. A big part of our work is appeals, and if the amount it costs to bring an appeal substantially increases, it could have the effect of deterring appeals, and at least from a policy standpoint, we've participated in those discussions previously. So I wanted to see how they fared in this particular go-around. Any questions, Commissioner Farini?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Black. We now will turn to our standard agenda, and I'd like to take item two out of order. So, Mr. Villalobos, if you'd read that into the record, we can consider the continuance request.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Following the hearing and the request, that Susan Petrovich, attorney for Rancho La Laguna LLC and La Laguna Ranch CO LLC, bonus, consider cases numbers, case number 06 TRM 2 and 16 CUP 30, applications filed on July 25th, 2006, and December 20th, 2016, and to certify the Environmental Impact Report 16 EIR 1 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. Before we consider the continuance request, are there any declarations that Commissioners have to make? I did have a conversation with Ms. Petrovich sometime in the last 10 or so days, but not about the continuance. It was about the project in chief, so I'll have more disclosures at the time we do take it up. So the letter of March 28 requests that today's hearing be continued to March 29th in order to increase the chances of a full commission on the 29th. Does staff have any comments about the continuance request? 26th, I'm looking at the date on the letter. Yes, March 26th. April 26th. Which year is that? Any comments from staff? None? Okay. Any questions or concerns from Commissioners? Let's ask if there are any public comments on the continuance request. Ms. Petrovich, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. I too want to join you in wishing Commissioner Blau a very speedy recovery, and look forward to seeing him on April 26, 2017.
I acknowledge, that's the request.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion, Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Since a very small part of that project is in the Third District, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we continue this item to the meeting of April 26th. And I'll second.
Any further discussion from Commissioners before we vote? Not seeing any. Mr. Villalobos?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here. Aye.
Commissioner Farini?
Aye.
Chair Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Petrovich. We'll see you in a couple of weeks or so, maybe a month. All right. Item number two on the agenda, are we ready to move forward with that? Item one, we've just done two. The second item on today's agenda is item number one.
The Planning Commission will receive a briefing addressing how the county development review process, application of standard conditions, and the California Energy Code requirements reduce impacts associated with night lighting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission. I will be giving a briefing, and also with me today is two distinguished gentlemen behind Mr. Wilson. One is Eric Graham, who works in our Development Review Division in the Permit Compliance, and Eric Hayden as well, with Billion Safety, who focuses on the Plan Check and is familiar with the Title 24 requirements. So they will be assisting if you have follow-up questions. So I'll start with the regulatory framework, really starts with our community plans. All of the community plans that we have really have policies that talk to or address, you know, the prevention of night light pollution and glare. And so really, they start, our regulatory framework starts from the community plans in the county area that have such requirements as limiting the lighting. And those are usually done through, obviously, the lighting plan. And the county land use regulations are, several of our applications, development plans, conditional use permits, they actually specifically require that lighting plans be provided as part of the application submitted package. So we do have that as a requirement for larger projects that go forward. In addition, there's development standards. Some are shown or depicted in the Land Use Development Code, and going back up to the comprehensive plan, many of the comprehensive plans have a broad-reaching policy, as you're familiar with, and then they have more detailed development standards. Some committee plans, Summerland and Mission Canyon have design guidelines, and I think the Gabbiota Coast now has design guidelines, which actually specify and get into more details of what the lighting should look like, as far as hooded or fully shielded, directed downward. Another way in our regulatory framework is the standard condition. We have a standard condition, you've all seen before, requiring the lighting plans. This next slide here kind of synthesizes or summarizes really what the intent is of our standard condition. Really, it's to ensure the exterior night lighting installed on the project site is low intensity, low glare, minimum height, hooded to prevent spill over onto adjacent lots. There's also a requirement for dimming. Certain requirements are at 10, other areas in the county, San Inez Valley have it at 9. So there's also several aspects here where, once you get into the lighting, about what the requirements are and what it is as the project goes forward that staff is looking to, and I think your commission is familiar with, in your review of projects and conditions. Taking the condition a little bit further, there's obviously plan requirements indicate that the lighting shows the location and height of all the exterior proposed light fixtures, shows the direction of the light being cast by each fixture. Those can be particularly for all lighting plans, specifically for those sometimes that we have where there's tall poles, maybe arenas, lighted arenas, where we really like to see the photometric aspects of what is being proposed as far as lighting on the lighting plans. Then we have the important monitoring portion of it, where PND or BAR, a lot of times after you've reviewed a project, the lighting plan in more detail goes to the Board of Architectural Review for a more detailed analysis, to ensure that the lighting plan is in compliance with the measures that were listed above in the standard condition. And then finally, you know, there's a requirement for monitoring that staff actually goes out to the site before final billing inspection, that final billing inspection, to ensure that the lighting plan and the light fixtures that were depicted and approved by you or the BAR are actually the ones that are on the structure. So this next slide is just kind of an indication. It shows you kind of the two lighting options, design options. The one on the left is where many of the community plans now have that requirement for fully cut off or fully shielded. So in that one, you can't see the light bulb, essentially, that the light is recessed or tucked underneath it. Those are the Gabbiota Coast, Summerland, Mission Canyon, Toro Canyon, San Inez Valley, all of those more recent plans have that. The one on the right talks about a hooded light, and that is what's discussed in our Land Use Development Code, as far as what's required. And then, some of the older community plans, specifically Orchid Community Plan, where the light bulb could still be seen, but there's still a direction from the community plan policies to have it hooded, so it doesn't shine in an upward direction, and that all the horizontal beams of the light at least go in a horizontal direction and not upward. So there is some provisions in the Land Use Development Code, and some of our community plans for at least that minimum requirement for light fixtures. Where, like I said, the one on the left is more of a fully cut off, shielded one that I think now you're seeing more in the updated community plans. This next slide just shows a couple of examples of those that are night sky-friendly. If you look at all of those, I think they all kind of have that light recessed up into the fixture. Those are ones now that we're, I think, more commonly seeing as you go out into the community and see. Next is, you know, the other portion after the project gets approved, and it goes to the planning side of it, the land use planning, then it goes before and into Plan Check and before Billion Safety staff. And so they're really looking at Title 24, Part 6 of the Building Code. That's really talking about the energy efficiency. So while our standard condition and our community plant policies talk about using just the minimum amount of light necessary or required, the standard conditions and policies focus a lot more on having it, on which ways the light going to be projected, downward, hooded, shielded. Where then, once you get into the Building Code aspects of it, it talks, it has some provisions for that, but it really talks into efficiency of power. You know, how is the lighting going to be proposed, and what areas is it used for? And there's basically three areas that it focuses on, single-family residences, multifamily residences, and then kind of the high-rise or motel and hotels. So there's three under the Building Code, where we typically look at exterior lighting plans that applies to projects here in the county. You know, for, under the Building Code, again, it's really focusing on the effectiveness and the efficiency of the light that's being proposed in the fixture. California certified and have control, so there's additional discussion in the Building Code that talks about sensors, motion sensors, the ability to either have the light turn off when there's no activity, or have it dimmed or turned off during the nighttime hours when it's not longer necessary, in the later hours. Under this, under the single-family residence, landscape lighting not attached to residents or residential accessory structures is not really regulated by the Building Code for the smaller type development. Going now to the other extreme, the more higher density or larger projects, non-residential high, we don't have too many high residential projects here in the county, but definitely hotels, motels, commercial projects. There's two different approaches when you're doing a lighting plan. One is called the prescriptive approach. It's similar to single-family residence, and it's very detailed, and where it talks, it has prescriptives on how much power is used in a certain area in a zone, for example, pedestrian or walkway areas. It kind of lays, kind of like a cookbook approach, and says, this is what you need, and this is how you apply it. Another approach is the performance approach. It's a more complicated way of doing it. It's usually done with computer modeling, in where they look at the outdoor power that is expected in a particular zone, a area that needs to be lit, and then, you know, the lighting power cannot exceed what is established by the Energy Commission. And so in that way, you're given And so in that way, you're given a little bit more flexibility in what type of lighting fixtures or bulbs you can use, but as long as you don't exceed what is determined in the energy, in the efficiency standards for lighting in the area, you can kind of have a little bit more flexibility in providing lighting in an area that's not so detailed and prescriptive. And then last thing, there's different zones for lighting. There's very low, which are kind of the undeveloped areas, versus the high urban use areas, which are contemplated under this non-residential high-rise component. Lastly, is the multifamily residential. This is kind of low-rise multifamily homes that we see in certain areas of the county. They have the option of applying either approach, the prescriptive, or the more complicated but you can use it approach. So they have a variety of approaches they can use for those types of development, and uplighting, glare requirements for those areas also has some restrictions for them. My briefing is somewhat short, but I know you probably have some questions, so I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zorovich. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, thank you, John. That was really informative and helpful. And a question for you about, we talked, you talked a little bit about the photometric studies being done. It seems to me that when I've seen the lighting plans that go through a BAR, that they all have these photometric studies for, I don't know, they're mostly commercial projects, I guess, I'm not sure, some residential. I don't know the projects, but I've just seen these lighting plans where they show the photometrics, you know, zero light trespass at the property line. So what, how does that, because that's not really required under the Building Code. Is it? I don't know. Is it? And maybe our other staff can address that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So it's about the photometrics that?
The photometric studies, yeah. There's no real requirement in the Energy Code that you run photometric studies.
Right.
It's helpful, so they can establish, I think, commercial, commercially, they can establish what lighting they want and desire, but it's not straight out of the Energy Code that photometric studies are required.
But I think they do it just because they, all these things are computerized anyway by the types of lights, fixtures, and standards that they use, so they plug it into a computer and out it comes. Is that sort of how it works?
That's right. And they'll use that information, I believe, to establish what power they are using.
Right, exactly.
And then compare that to the power budget that they have.
Okay. And the last thing that Mr. Zorovich had on his sheet about the bug standards, the uplighting and glare, are those only for multifamily, or are they for, also for commercial?
The, let's speak to the multifamily standards first. Multifamily standards is kind of a mix. Anything attached to the structure is covered under the residential code, so you're just subject to the motion sensors and lighting. Outside of that, in the hardscape areas, and those areas are where the non-residential standards kick in, and you are usually looking at a power budget, and they do have bug lighting standards, backlight, uplight, and glare requirements for lamps that are greater than 150 watts.
Oh, okay.
And so, but it's, again, it's, the information, and the backlighting, there is no requirements. Uplighting and glare, there are requirements, but they're really speaking to the amount of power and lighting, or power usage in those two situations, glare and uplighting. You can waste a lot of power, obviously, so they have limits on those that are, the manufacturer actually tests to, through their photometric studies.
I see. So when you get these lighting plans, they have these glare and uplighting standards that you can check?
Yeah, for our case, they call out the fixtures, and we look to the Energy Commission, because all these fixtures are listed on their website.
Oh, okay.
So it's fairly cookie cutter for us to check those, to make sure that they are using the right fixtures.
Yeah. It's nice that lighting has come out of the dark, has, from the dark ages, so to speak.
It's come a long way.
It has come a long way.
Big books about it.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Zorovich. Very helpful.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I'm interested-